Table call meeting to draw some pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open the meeting up to public comment. Yes, state your name, please.
On number 12, this is an operation with letter D, 724,000, 41,000.
Letter D?
Pledge of trans.
Those are for the referendum to capital project. We've awarded some additional bid alterings recently, and so you'll see that we've broken down each project number, each budget, so that we're affording the most aid on it. And that's just transferring some funds out of certain projects over to the roof projects.
Things that follow that, is that a core or is it just a roof project?
Some of the things that followed those change orders do apply, but others were done earlier, late December. Mark, if you have any, well, I'm not sure we're going to be here tomorrow, but get me in for questions. If you want to shoot me an email, I'll be there.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. Tonight we have a special presentation from Bernie Donigan's office. Chuck Bashin is here for a little short presentation on more financial consultants.
Thank you very much. We brought along a report tonight for you to take a brief look at. And if you would, turn into page five. I'm going to call an audible here, we're going to go a little bit further in, and I want to focus on page five and six to start with. That's probably a good starting point for any Board of Education when we look at, again, building project debt need you have and building aid, how do all those pieces link together and flow together? Again, Board of Education, well, we remember you break up your budget into three main components, right? We have an admin component, a program component, and a capital component of your operating budget. So, we as your financial advisor, with whatever your capital projects are that you have currently or projected, ideally if there's a way to make that level, make that consistent from year to year, that's a pretty good goal to have, so that it doesn't whip saw back and forth. So, here's a snapshot on page five of where we currently stand. So, this is always kind of good, it shows you, do you have drops coming up in the future or do you have a spike coming at you? Again, it's like driving down the road with your high heels on, you want to kind of see what's all laid out in front of you. So, on page five, column A and B are your existing principal and interest payments on all of your bonds. And we also have projected in here the current capital project that you're wrapping up, the $17 million project. The final piece on that might be conversion of your last financing there this summer, roughly a $10 million serial bond. So, that is projected in here with an estimated interest rate, but everything else is fixed. Everything else has set principal and interest payments. So, those two together are column C, that's your debt service, principal and interest. Column D is all the building needs coming in each year against that. And then column F is what we call local share. And that's a key dollar amount that you want to focus on each year as the board, because again, that's one of those exclusions that we can have in the tax cap, that we have to calculate in there. So, if we can keep that piece, that item F, that dollar amount, consistent from year one, year two, and year three, it helps as you go through your tax cap calculations. Again, you don't have whip saw on the tax rate going back and forth. So, that's a goal. And you'll see 18, 19, this upcoming budget year is your top row. The second row there, 19, 20 school year, we have a big drop in your debt service on the expense side. We also have essentially a corresponding drop on the building aid. And that again was one of the old projects you had back from, I think, 1989, or a $27 million project. So, that bond is being paid off. I remember when that was issued a few years back. So, again, over on column F, you'll see you're going from a little over $1 million for that local share this coming year, down to about $628,000. So, that's good. There's a nice drop that's coming up for us. Before I leave this, did you have any questions on that? Okay, you can see a graph on page six.
Just real quick, going back to tab. Column F is our local share.
Right.
And you're saying that drop is good, coming from $1 million to $600,000?
Right, so that provides you, just like all school districts around the state, an opportunity. Do we have potentially new projects that might be coming up, new needs that you have, and that would be timing to dovetail that in, as opposed to having a gap, or as opposed to having overlap? So, if you have needs, just like every school district does around the state, and if your new needs fit into the timing of that gap, if you can plan a little bit ahead of time like we are now, that's what this report is, if it can fit in, perfect, you can keep it nice and smooth.
Right, then we don't have that like.
Right.
And that affects the tax cap.
Correct, that's a key component in the tax cap. And you may have heard stories about how a district may have a decreasing levy in a given year, but all of a sudden you need the super majority situation of a voter referendum to make. It's an oddball way that the math can happen, but that is one of the factors that drive a situation like that. So, again, if we can keep that smooth as possible, without having spikes or one of these spikes coming at you, or drop offs, if you can keep it smooth, that's a great thing to try to accomplish, if you can, depending on the timing and the dollar amounts of future projects.
So, right now, what you're saying is, if we don't look to sue a future project, we're going to have that gap there.
Right, you could end up with a gap, and that would be a drop, and then maybe a few years later, whenever you do need your next building project to go to the voters, then you're going to have an increase.
Right.
And we'd have to talk to the community about what that increase might look like and how it impacts them.
So, from a budgeting standpoint, it's good to keep it somewhat constant?
Right, that's generally what we find with every school district around the state. You can keep it steady, then you as the board members get to focus on the rest of your operating budget and manage it better.
And what cap were we talking about? Is that the $1,480 minus the $628 pay?
Right, so that's about a little over $400,000 drop coming up for you that we need to figure out, what do we want to do with it as a board? Okay, so that's a key page. But let's go back now, let's talk about potential new building project, and let's start on page three. Again, board members, if you've been through the process before, like the $17 million current project, there's a number of variables that we want to lay out, just like we did a few years back with the $17 million project. And the first and foremost variable, top of page three, is our building aid ratio. Again, that's how the state reimburses us for all the dollars that we may spend on a building project, for roofs and boilers and windows and everything else. So, 66.2%, everybody see that ratio? That's a great ratio. Down below that, what we also have is the bond percentage, so that's again, a key percentage that we need to confirm with the architect, make sure that the D dot design that they're doing, if it's general renovations of basic systems in the building, it should be 100% addable, but we don't usually want to start off with 100% because there's no room for error, then we want to be a little conservative and go with 95, and have it turn out to be 100. Then we list out a set of dates, because everything is kind of a domino now as we go through setting up an authorization. So, if you do want to vote, let's say this May of 2018, coming up here, then the set of assumptions that we would make after that, maybe a year later, would be state ed approval. You can work with your architect and find out how many months they need to design the project, maybe it's six months, and they'll need another six months for state ed for their approval. So, by spring of 19, you'd have approval, and we would start some of the borrowings, June of 19, we'd have to come due with an interest and maybe a principal payment, June of 2020. We would hopefully then wrap up the project by the spring of 2021, we'd find out when the architect would file certificate of completion, and then we could file the final cost report June of 2021, and that's when the building aid starts for us. So, everything is a date-driven process here. We've got a couple of interest rates that we've assumed to start with right now, 4% for a note, which are our short-term borrowings, 5% for bonds. Even with a little bit of volatility here, last few days, bonds are in the low 3% range for you for a 15-year bond. I think Louise and I were looking earlier, this last bond that we just issued this last year ago, last spring, was around a 269, 266, I think, so well below 3, but it's moved up a little bit, as you know. We also have a down payment that you have from your capital reserve account that we factored in here, $425,000, which helps lower the amount then to bond, and a state-assumed interest rate of how the state pays us building aid, about 4.5%. Any questions on some of these main variables that we have here?
I just got a question on the building aid ratio. When does the state make an adjustment there? I mean, is it like every 10 years, 20 years? What do they, that's been constant for some time, hasn't it?
Yeah, if you would, turn to the back bar chart, towards the back of the report. And yes, your building aid ratio is really the orange bar, it's called the build four, there's four different building aids that the state pays us, and currently in today's votes would be, what we would qualify for would be build four. And you're right, we've been around 66.2% for a number of years, and the estimate is out for 18, 19, that far right-hand column actually ticks up a little bit to 66.8. So, each year, there's a new calculation that's done, and we're, these last few years essentially have been grandfathered, we stay at that highest rate that we've had, the 66.2. But we're not going to use the estimated rate in this calculation, just because it's estimated and it's higher, so I want to go more conservative with the latest actual that, in this case, is a slightly lower, 66.2.
Any conversation state level that they're going to be excited to make?
The building aid ratio changes slightly each year, and that's what you can see from the current, the blue bars there, the blue row, and that's effectively what's called your ARWADA aid ratio, the resident weighted average daily attendance, like your BOSI's aid ratio. So, again, it goes up or down slightly each year, depending upon how your property's full valuation compares to every other school district in the state, and they recalibrate that every year. But then they also have a selected calculation that kind of grandfathers us into whatever our highest aid ratio was going back to the '81, '82 school year. So, it's pretty consistent through those years, but does tweak a little bit. Any questions? Okay.
If we, let's say that we do look at a project, and it comes to fruition, and we're advancing the money the year 2021, would we have a dip and then go back up, or are we just trying to time this perfect?
Back on page five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so page five, again, if you're voting this May, that fits perfectly. If you're not ready to vote this May, it slides to December, it can still fit, you can still handle that.
Time is kind of a justice.
It is, right. It provides you more opportunities, you're right. If you get crunched on time, then that is tighter to put a piece together. Okay, any other questions on the assumptions at the beginning?
Chuck, did you offer anyone in the audience that packet? There's some copies of these that you.
Okay, page four. What we have here on the left side, revenues, again, we've run this analysis on an $8 million capital building project. So, on the left side, the two revenue components to that project would be $425,000 capital reserve and your down payment, and $7,575 would be the rest that would be for the bond. On the right-hand side, again, you can see how those dollars are allocated accounting-wise for expenses, about $7.7 million for construction and incidentals. You know, we've set a few dollars aside in case we want to issue our bond through the dorm authority, through DASG, and there's some reasons why we may want to do that. We don't have to, but we may want to, as long as it makes our aid go better and our local share smaller, that's why we would go that route. Okay, we went through five and six. Page seven, namely, are just the technical calculations of how we do the building aid calculations. So, if you would, turn to page nine. So, page nine here shows how an $8 million project lays out accounting-wise. Column B, again, there's that $425,000 capital reserve amount. Column C, then, we paid back the $7,575 bond over 15, 16, 17 years there. We have interest payments in column E, and again, the combination of those two is column F, the debt service, and building aid coming in of $486,000 per year, leaves you in column J, those first few years, we've structured that, so we've front-loaded that bond to fit in there nicely for you, about 400, a little over $400,000 a year, through and including the 2024, 25 school year, and then you have a drop. So, again, I can front-load that bond, because of the size of that bond, to fit within that gap that you have coming up here nicely, and then that provides you another drop-off in 2025, 26. And again, I know our architects do a building condition survey report for you every five years, so you'll have another one of those given to you, and you'll go through as board members and find out how that list of items, what are the high priority items that you might want to package together for a new capital project, vote at that point in time, each time you have one of those. So, it's always nice to have one of these drop-offs in the future, and if the timing works and if it fits, then that's about as well as we can plan something.
Just a quick question for you. So, you said that the last bond that's going to be dropping off is from the '89 timeframe?
Right.
Which was a lot higher. And this bond that you're saying will fit in lower, will fit in as much lower, and is the reason for that, because that one was from the LIV as well?
I could look at the structure on that one, that one was probably pretty flat, and that was a bigger project back than that $27 million project. So, any million dollar piece would be a lot smaller, so I could front-load that fitting into this roughly $400,000 drop-off.
Okay, that's why you would suggest front-loading this one.
Well, we are front-loading this one.
Right, right, in this example.
Right.
Chuck, just so the general audience can understand, and you know, more or less in layman's terms, the benefit of us establishing that capital reserve in this scenario meant a lot, right? Because you're pulling $425,000 out of that reserve to offset the impact to the taxpayers.
Exactly, right, and you're using that toward your local share. Again, if we have, was our number 66% is our building aid ratio, so the inverse of that is the local share, roughly 33%. So, that down payment, that savings goes right toward that, which is wonderful, and then, you know, reduces your local share even that much further, down to this right-hand column J. And again, you're not paying interest expense on that additional amount that you would not have to be bonding.
So, based on an $8 million project, pretty much the impact to the taxpayer would be almost flat?
Right, no increase.
Right. If we increase that bond, then we show a slight increase in the tax level to the taxpayer.
That's an option, or in column J, like out in 2025, 26, instead of having it drop down to 110 or 107, it might still be at $400,000. You know, it might go out a few more years, that drop-off would not be as soon. So, you're right, that'll be where you're going to be deciding what size this project may be. Okay, we can come back to this page, but page 10 is really how they tie together now. So, again, the first few columns, A, B, C, D, are the existing bonds, existing debt. Column E, F, there's our new principal and interest coming into play, and building aid against it. So, column I, again, that's now where everything would line together, and that's where you're again, trying to keep consistent, if you can, from one year to next. Number one, just budget-wise, that's a good thing to do, and number two, levy cap-wise, because of that calculation, how you subtract out one year, you add in the next year, but that really helps you levy cap-wise going through. So, it keeps you consistent around that $1,480 level or so.
So, this is the vote, this and that.
Proposed, yes.
Proposed, that's why Chuck came in this evening to kind of give us the scenario and how it impacted taxpayers moving forward.
Right, the next few steps, if you do decide to go forward, is that you may recall from last time, if we decided that we do want to vote May 15th this year, the board would need to take action sometime in March, and your board meetings in March, either early or late March, to call for the referendum. So, you adopt your environmental resolution in March, and then you adopt a resolution calling for the referendum in May, you do a few publications between then, and then see how the vote goes, and right after that then, the board would adopt a bond resolution, authorizing bonds to be issued for that capital project the voters would have authorized.
Thank you for coming in. I think the board at this point has a good handle on if and when we decide if you want to go forward with another capital project, what the impact would be to the taxpayers based on an $8 million project, which basically would be no impact at all. Did this have our bond rating on there? What's our bond rating?
A plus.
Which is like fantastic, right?
That's a very good credit rating, right? Triple A is the best, double A, there's three categories in there, double A plus, double A, double A minus, and then you are at the top of the A category, which is A plus. Right, so that's generally where most school districts are in New York State. We just had that updated last spring, it's back in spring of 2017 when we issued our bond for the current capital project, the first piece. So, keep up the good work on maintaining that credit, because that's not always easy to do in New York State.
Thank you for coming in.
Great, thanks Chuck. Now, Lisa, if you could hand out this to the board, we have a potential capital project list that we've reviewed with the administration, Mr. Miller has looked over this also and gave his input. We met with the Support Services Committee about two weeks ago, taking an initial look. Certainly, there are a lot more items than would ever fit into a $7 or $8 million project. But again, we have an opportunity here to basically keep up on regular maintenance of the district, of the buildings. So, if we were, if this was, if we were shopping for a car, you know, we're not looking for heated mirrors and a moonroof, these are just regular, this is four tires and a steering wheel. These are things that we need to do to maintain our buildings properly for our students and for our community. So, there's safety measures on there, there's things of regular preventive maintenance, things that we really should do, and educational items that we need and can be helpful for our students moving forward to the 21st century. So, the idea is not to have long discussions, I, we want the board to take some time, look at the list. Our next step was to meet again with the Support Services Committee, but also to invite a community group in to also review these and get their input on some of the items.
Okay, just to wrap it up with the potential for a capital project, some of these items that are on this list that were put together by Mr. Miller and the rest of the support staff, administrative staff, I'm sorry, basically is some of the, I'm going to call them the leftover items from our 2014 referendum that initially got defeated, and then we approved the 17.5, and then some of those other items that were discussed back then are currently in need of upgrades, so all that is part of that draft copy of potential capital projects. All right, we'll move our meeting to acceptance of reports, and then we'll get into personnel. Being resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes, January 23rd, 2018. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Heather. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Under personnel, I think this is something that everybody's been anxious and waiting. Tonight, we are going to appoint new superintendent of schools for the High and Central School It was a long process. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Corey, Elster BOSI Superintendent, for his input, his guidance, everything that went into it. I think he guided the entire board through this whole process. We had a timeline set up back in August, September, I believe it was, and the final outcome of that timeline had us appointing a superintendent sometime in February, and here we are. Dr. Corey spent many hours here in the school district, sitting down with the committees, sitting down with the Board of Education, going out and sending information out to various publications to gather interested candidates into that pool that would like to become our superintendent. So, with all that, we were able to garner, I think, around 40 applicants, and with the 40 applicants, we narrowed it down to about 12, and then we did some more brainstorming, and we reduced that list down to, I think, six candidates. At that point in time, we were able to, through the help of Dr. Corey again, to put together a committee, and I know a lot of those committees And I know a lot of those committee members are here this evening. And I'd like to thank you for the input, your due diligence in reviewing the applicants, sitting through those meetings. I think that one Tuesday night was from four or three o'clock to probably nine o'clock in the evening, that this, the committee members had to sit through and review with each and every one of the candidates that the board had brought forward. So I want to thank the committee for the time spent and the input and what you were able to feed back to the Board of Education was valuable. We were able to look at all that information and come up with a decision that we felt was in the best interest of the Highland Central School District and community. So with that, we were able to narrow it down to our finalists and we did a final interview. So with that all being said, again, thank you to all those that were involved. I want to thank the board. I sat through, this would be my third superintendent search and interview process, and I have to say with new technology, this is by far the best. I mean, we were able to look at videos of the candidates and what they were able to tell us about themselves, their careers and all, became very valuable. In the past, it was just basically, you know, sitting down in a face-to-face interview, which does tell a lot about a candidate, no doubt. But this round, I think, was most impressive to me. You know, I sat through the other two, and I think the board enjoyed going through the process, even though it was long and lengthy. I think that what we're going to announce shortly is a culmination of all their hard work and their due diligence, and we're able to bring forward a superintendent that I think the Highland Central School District, the community is going to be proud of, and I believe the individual will do a fine job moving our district forward. With all that being said, I don't know if any other board members want to add anything. I will read the appointment resolution. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby appoints Thomas M. Bon Jovi as superintendent of schools to the Highland Central School District for the period of time commencing February 6th, 2018, and terminating on June 30th, 2021, with annual compensation of $172,250 through June 30th, 2019. And be as further resolved, the board hereby authorize its president to execute an agreement with Mr. Bon Jovi as presented to the board at this meeting, which sets forth the terms and conditions of his employment as superintendent of schools from February 6th, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Can I have a motion? Please, motion by Heather, second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Congratulations. We're going to take a brief break and have a little reception so you can meet and greet. But I want to say one thing. We were able to, it's a little unique in this situation because we were in need of an interim superintendent. And with our, our searches, some of them ended up not being able to come to fruition, but we were able to reach out to Tom, brought him on board back in October. And I think to be able to, and I, and I call it a, an introduction, he was able to audition for us. So I think he impressed the community, the school, school staff and everyone. So I, I think that was a positive for Tom.
Yes.
And I know he hit the ground running back in October. The board had a, a lot of issues that we needed to be addressed, and Tom took, took charge and ran with it and got some resolution to some of those issues. So I believe moving forward that Tom will be able to move this district in the right direction, in a positive direction, and it'll benefit the community and our students of this district. So thank you. Congratulations.
I have a brief statement.
Go ahead. If you don't mind.
So this past Thursday night, we had our Not My Child event. And at that evening, I mentioned the theme for that night was education, community and family. Now that theme wasn't just for that night. Here in Highland, that's the theme every day. So tonight, we, we have a wonderful turnout. I would like to thank everyone for taking time out of their personal lives to be here to support myself and the district. Thank you, Dr. Corey, President Verone, and the entire Board of Education for their faith and support of me as the superintendent of schools. It is my goal to continue to strengthen our education, community and family, so that together we will have a positive, lifelong impact on the students of our community and our families of this district. I'd also like to thank Assistant Superintendent for instructions, Sarah Dudley Lemick. Thank you very much for your support. Business administrator Louise Lynch. My right hand and partner, the person who really runs the district, Carly Jacobson. Our building administrators, all faculty and staff, and certainly the students. That's why we're all here. It takes a team. You must have a team. Any successful organization is run like a team, in a team spirit and team mode. I'm truly privileged and honored to be designated as the leader of that team. It's also quite timely that in the same year that Cousin John is being inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, that the original Bon Jovi is being inducted into the Highland Hall of Fame. Thank you very much. If you take my hand, we'll make it. I swear. No hustings. I think we'll take a short break. Short break. We have some refreshments and cake. Thank you.
I guess everyone would like a board, they like you, Tom. You have to appoint a superintendent every month. Well, we're back. Under curriculum and instruction, our directive report. Any questions on the directive reports? Everybody's good?
Yeah.
All right. We'll go under personnel. We'll do personnel as a block, if you're okay with that, from A through B. And then we have a couple of recommendations that are here this evening that we'll announce. So if you're good with taking personnel as a block from A to B, can I have a motion? Motion by Mike, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have a couple individuals in the room.
Yes, I'd like to thank and congratulate Cody. Cody is here. Cody. So we have the ladies, Tom Stevens, Margaret Jones, and Marilyn. Thank you for joining. Congratulations. Speaking Assistant Assistant Attorney at law at this school. Thank you so much and congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. And like we normally say, that, that commitment to work with our students is a large commitment, and we look forward to you continuing a lot of years here in Highland and giving back to the students and staff of our, of our district. So thank you and welcome aboard. Okay, our student rep. You're up.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bon Jovi on his new appointment as the official superintendent. I also want to thank the board, Dr. Corey, and the community members that participated in interview process, where they knew he came in the admittance, that the right man for the job was already in the seat. Through, through these few months, Mr. Bon Jovi has already been, has already made great progress in becoming a Highland community member by attending weekly road meetings to attending school events. To that, I thank him for jumping in, and even though he didn't know if he would be staying, he made the most out of, out of his time here. I'm also glad to be here, knowing that he will be the superintendent, as I know he truly cares, is always open-minded, is always willing to listen to new ideas. For instance, just last week, I emailed him to discuss concerns over the bus cancellation, cancellations, and he assured me he was on it. And by knowing him, I know who that is. Highland became a superintendent who wasn't just willing to do the work, but become a community member and friend. And I would say that Mr. Bon Jovi had definitely done that. Again, I congratulate you and congratulate our school district, because I know you're a good man.
Thank you, Dean. Appreciate you.
Thank you. On the business side, Molly Magnation is scheduled to go down to our Boston trip for the Boston End Conference this Thursday. We're keeping our fingers crossed that the snow doesn't affect any plans. Last, this past Friday, the Interact Club hosted their Queen of Hearts Ball, which is our annual charity ball, and we raised $25,000 for local charities. We're currently deciding on different charities, but one that we immediately jumped on was a little, a young girl in second grade, Quinn, in this sashes class started Give a Kiss, Give a Child a Kiss campaign, which was aimed to raise money for St. Jude's Children Hospital, Research Hospital. And you're really amazed to see this second grader watch a commercial and be touched by it and want to make a difference and take it upon yourself to ask the peers to spend a Valentine's Day to a child who's dealing with cancer and maybe a dollar to Jovi. And I think that's really cool. So we were really excited to go down to elementary school and present her with a $250 check for St. Jude's Children Research Hospital in honor of her, because she really, you know, that's when it's cool to be someone making a difference, or in the second grade. On that trip, I, on a side note, I was able to see the elementary school, which was cool because I haven't seen it since the new project. So it was a really nice new entrance, and that was awesome to see. Interact also, a few weeks ago, during the region's week, we had held a meeting at the middle school, a Class B helpers meeting, in the goals to create a volunteer group in the middle schools, that we can get them sort of start it younger, and when they get it to the Highland, excuse me, when they get it to the high school, that they can right jump into Interact Lab and be, become officers sooner rather than later, really take on volunteering at a younger age. I also wanted to just thank Hannah Curd and Joey Garcia and the Awesome Chaprones and the janitorial staff helping us with this past dance for the Queen of Hearts Ball. Science one we had on Saturday, went to their competition, their annual competition, and Ariana Mel, Ming Tran, and Christine Klein all placed. This, um, this upcoming Wednesday, Valentine's Day, National Institute is hosting their annual senior citizen luncheon, which all senior citizens of Maryland are welcome. Today, they challenged on a field trip to attend an orientation for the competition in March, which was a cool experience. I was able to attend myself, and it was a lot of economic stuff that I need to learn and get ready for, but it was really cool to experience and be part of it. On that note, I was starting to think about how we could present maybe a club fund in some way. I don't know how it would work with financials, but the students this trip, how we had to end up paying for our train ticket, and I was hoping maybe there's some way that we could get those transportation paid for, we could work that out in some way. I, I think we, I know usually we offer school buses, but getting down to the elementary district is difficult on a school bus, and it's very, would be a challenge. Also, there's only like 10 kid, you know, 10 people altogether. So, and in general, I think other clubs were taken on, I'd like to maybe to maybe take out a club fund or something where they can borrow money to ease that sponsor club or the project that they're building on, or a field trip that they want to attend, or something that they might want to do. So I'd like to add, I think together, how it would work. I also want to talk about the Not My Child presentation. It was a press, I spoke to some of my peers, and the overall consensus was it was extremely emotional and touching, and about a lot of the students and parents. But the concern was, is it going to be sort of effective? Is it going to stop that kid from going down the path that we hope they won't? So I think in suggestion, we just continue that research, we continue the outreach, and hopefully stop that one kid, two kids. So mixed reviews, but I think overall people were touched and hopeful but angry at the same time that this is a sign of, that there is a chance.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dean? Thank you, Dean. Under business and operations health and welfare contract, High Park Central School District, be resolved, Board of Education upon the recommendation of a superintendent of schools, approve the 2017-18 Health and Welfare Contract for six students at a cost of $889.87 per student, for a total of $5,339.22, with the High Park Central School District and authorized as the board president, district clerk, to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget transfer be resolved, Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, approves the following budget transfer in the amount of $724,232 for 2017-18 school year, budget transfer number 6774, $724,232. Can I have a motion, please? Move by Tom, second by Ed. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Phase 1B change order, Dutch's Mechanical be resolved, Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent, approves the following change order relevant to Dutch's Mechanical's plumbing work contract as presented to the board at this meeting. November 29th, change order number one, replace second hot water heater, remove and reroute domestic water lines, every place section of sanitary piping, boys locker room, I was going to do them all as a block, all right? I just don't think we need a resolution. Phase 1A, construction change order, Meyer Contracting, unspent portion of allowance, I believe that's a de-dub, so that's given, coming back to us, $20,809. Phase 1B, construction change order, Pixseal Pipe is contracting, additional floor drains, replace the floor sink, remove grease trap, floor drain, raise gas line, replace existing recirculation hot water pump, $3,086. Phase 1B, change order, day automation. There's multiple change order, I believe, four of them. Install cabling conduit junction boxes for four new door frames, elementary school, Install cabling conduit junction boxes for three door frames in middle school, $5,042.66. Install cabling conduit junction boxes to five new door frames, high school, $8,404.44. And install cabling conduit junction boxes to new door frames for future security in the bus garage, $1,068.88. Phase 1A, construction change order, key construction, install louvers and windows, number 12803, number 51, and number 65, $58,406. Phase 1B1, construction change order, key construction, delete work because providing access doors of passage from classroom display cases, that's a credit of $21,752. 1B.2, change order Hudson Valley ECNM, high school stage dimmer switch, $10,800. 1B.2, change order Hudson Valley EC&amp;M, high school stage dimmer switch, $10,888. 1B.2, change order, adoptable construction, that's high school locker room flooring, $72,061. And I think that's it on the change orders for the project so far. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second. By Mike. Discussion?
So just, you have a lot of change orders here, because we are working to close out the project as we were given the task by the board to do that. So in order to do that, these are the, you know, things that had to get done so we can close out the project. Yes, just seems like it's a lot at one time, but yes. And again, for the public and for the board, you know, these are, you can just see the number of things that go into a project. So a lot of these things are things you're never gonna see. You know, circuit boxes and cabling, you know, those aren't things that you're necessarily going to notice by looking at it, but certainly all very integral part of the project.
Just a couple of questions for clarification. Some of these change orders, I think, for instance, install louvers in windows. Was that an omission as far as the design team not including that in the original contract? Or was that something that we asked to add into those windows?
Peter, I think that's an omission, right?
You said it.
Sorry.
That was an omission?
Yes.
In regards to, maybe Louise, you can answer this. I see we got probably $20-something thousand to day automation. I'm gonna say, because it's that question I've been bringing up numerous times in our even in our support and maybe even through direct conversations, that how are we measuring day automation with the base bid contract? And here's a perfect example, is that the hardware was under the base bid and we're going day automation later, and now we're paying $21,000 for service, that hardware. Is that an omission on the architect not providing power there for those?
No, that was, that was an adjustment, for lack of a better word, where to pre-wire the doors on installation. Doing it now that way saves in the long run moving forward, so we did that.
Okay, no, I understand that, but bottom line was, it was in neither one of the contracts to provide that cable, correct? It wasn't in day automation's $900-something thousand proposal to us, and it wasn't in each one of the electrical contracts?
It was in day automation's proposal, but that proposal was never acted on.
Okay, so we jumped started that proposal?
Correct.
Alright. So... Can we have the contract of day automation then?
No.
Well, we're waiting for Smart School approval.
So how are we paying, how are we initiating a change order to day automation?
It was in two portions. We have a contract for them for the non-Smart School portion. Right, Peter?
Yes. It was $141,000 worth of infrastructure, something like that, that was in a contract with day automation.
I think it was a little more than that, but yes.
Alright.
So it was a change order to that, not to the security portion.
Okay. Any other questions? All of them favor? Opposed? So carried. Okay, I mean, the same thing on the business operation, right? Sarah?
I have a bunch of discussion there.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Sarah. You don't wanna speak, huh? Okay, both discussion.
So Louise and I want to talk a little bit about a bus proposal. So similar to the project, the potential project with transportation and our buses, certainly we want to keep consistent and have a, you know, a regular replacement cycle. And you'll see in a few minutes, the public will see, you know, going back a few years, we didn't stay completely consistent, so we kind of had some blip with the amount of vehicles. So we will step up to the mic and do that presentation for you.
So in front of you, you all have some presentation. And on the last page of the presentation, I hope you, yes. We did my presentation with last years. It should have a very colorful page. Looks like this. So this is the existing fleet, and we're gonna talk about that in summary format. But I want to point that out to you, sometimes we start with that. So here's your car replacing our buses. If you look at this chart, and I'm not sure if everyone can see it or look it up in the screen. But so as you can see, in the last five years, especially the last two years, we bought a lot of buses. And that's because there were some years where we did buy in buses. The way I look at this is we have a fleet of about 40 or 42 buses, which means if we're on a 10-year cycle, we buy about four buses a year. That's if everything remains constant. We know that we're having more runs, we're dealing with some homeless students that need to be brought to different places. So our runs seem to be getting a little bit more challenging, and Doug and Peter could probably speak to that. But so this is just an overall summary of the number of buses we bought in recent years. And in a perfect world, we talked about stabilizing debt earlier. In a perfect world, we buy four or five buses every year, but we can't do that because we're in catch-up mode, and we're close to the end of that. But so again, I'll refer you to that last page, and I think what I hope you'll take away from that last page is the very bottom column where it says 10-plus years old. As you know, with your personal vehicle, you know, once your car gets to a certain point, you know, you start spending a lot of money on maintenance, it's off the road, it's in for service, and it costs a lot when you start doing significant repairs. So let's see, so let's go back. Again, five years, in the last five years, we bought 25 buses. Five years before that, we bought 14 buses. So I want to thank Peter and Doug Carter for their input on this. We had a meeting, sense of conversation about what we could do, what we couldn't do without. We ended up with three propane buses. Before I go further, I'll let you know, remember there was a time where we got that grant for $250,000? We got it, the money's here. That allowed us to reduce our cost of prior years. But so I think we need to continue to move forward with appropriate buses. There's two 29/30 passenger vans, one wheelchair van, and one 6/7 passenger suburban. And then, as we do each year, we buy radios, cameras, and some safety, any kind of incidentals that don't come included. So that is the explanation for this year. And Doug, Peter, I'm not sure if you want to add anything, any level of depth, so cover it a bit.
Any questions?
I think we're pretty sure that, pretty certain that with the purchase of this amount, that then we can get on a more regular schedule, as we said earlier, moving forward next year.
And as you know, we get about 60% aid. What we've done in the past is this goes up as a proposition. Once we purchase the buses, we borrow the money, and we pay off one-fifth each year for the subsequent five years. So just use the million-dollar figure, if we bought a million dollars worth of buses, in a year following, we would budget $200,000, we'd probably get about $140 aid. It would increase the local share by $60,000. Any questions?
Hey, on the autogas, I know we were working on, back to the original group, the past one, we were working on incentives. Are those still in existence, or they?
What was the?
We were looking towards propane, gasoline, autogas buses.
Yeah.
Do they still exist, any of those incentives?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The incentives?
We have not received any incentives since the initial one, the support of the locals. Now, I don't know if there are, but they're more common now, as are most grants, once it becomes kind of named, you know.
Security cameras won't let stuff get transferred from the old buses to the new?
Well, what's happening is some of those security cameras are more than five years old now. But if they're viable and in good shape, yes. I know we're taking them out, taking a look at them, using them for spare parts. Sometimes they're in good enough shape, but there's an assessment made based on whether they can be used now.
I'm sure you guys have looked in at this, obviously, if you're much more aware of the current situation. But just looking from afar, we have one wheelchair van on there. It looks like there's one that's over 10 years old, but then we only have one other that has a significant amount of mileage on it. Do we think one is sufficient to cover what we need there?
In a perfect world, we would probably be ordering an additional wheelchair bus. I noticed very recently, we've made some contacts to see if we could borrow one or lease one if needed. But this recommendation was made by Peter and Doug and myself, based on what they felt were the biggest priorities. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, though.
The newer van that we have, number 160 there, will be kept as a spare. And the new wheelchair van, which comes to us in August and September, that'll be the one we primarily rely on. Our older wheelchair van, number 143, in fact, just went out of service, so we're making arrangements to provide a secondary backup wheelchair van if necessary.
So really, we have one that's needed on a daily basis, so that one?
Correct, at this time, yeah. A wheelchair van needs though are unpredictable.
Yeah, agreed. And that's why I was just concerned, even though it's a newer one, it's 2011, it's already got almost 150,000 miles on it. And in here, that we have less expenditures if something that's needed.
Doug, do they carry one passenger at a time, or do you have a couple of students?
The wheelchair vans usually can be reconfigured to accommodate three or four wheelchairs if necessary. The maximum we've had to transport are two wheelchair students at one occasion. Thankfully, those students have gone to the same school. If we were to have two students requiring wheelchairs going to separate schools, they would have to utilize two wheelchair vans on a daily basis to have a third wheelchair van as backup.
And at the same time, are you seating on there for other buses?
Yes, yes, there might be other seating. Just have one wheelchair student on, and we might be seating for 20 other passengers.
I have to say, my family benefited from those vans, and we were always very grateful and for the presence and the fact that they existed. And on the very rare occasion, in many, many years, that we relied on, when an incident did pop up or one wasn't available, we were more than happy to do our part considering the premise of it. But the presence and the effort to have them there is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
One quick question. Are we back where you want to be as far as, no. Because it was several years, you know, back in 2012, when we purchased one large bus. 2013, but we had the camera, we purchased any large buses. And then '14, we purchased two, but then we jumped to seven and five. So hopefully now, are we back on track to doing three or four a year?
What's happened a little bit is the demographic has changed a little bit. It's driven us more toward vans than big buses, because of the student population and the demographics that's involved in where they go and what's happening at that point. The fleet, in reality, at one point was about 47 buses. It's gonna turn out to be somewhere between 43 and 45 when we get through this whole transition thing for the most part, unless more vans are required because of special needs or whatever. So are we back to that track? One of the things that we're doing with the three big buses this year is we're finally eliminating the buses that sat on the dirt and the caterpillars and getting out of that. So then we're moving into what I'll call the next generation of where we are. And then it should level out. We kind of said, we were hoping it would be a little bit leveler this year than it was, but we had a number of buses go out of service. So it's, you know, but I think we're heading in that right direction.
I think our level of bus purchases is leveling as we want. It's our need for suburbans and vans that fluctuate so much, and we've only has grown. Just in the last two weeks or so, I've had to add two new suburban runs to accommodate students going out of district. So that's a less predictable component of our operation.
I mean, am I being that official to the district if we were to purchase an additional seven-passenger suburban or a wheelchair vehicle? Being that we're getting back aid on transportation aid, I mean, you would think that the benefit to the district would be far greater than what the cost is, because I know now there's time where sports runs, a coach can drive a van to take students to a meet or to something that, you know, doesn't involve a lot of players.
Coach can drive.
We have enough to accommodate that. Because I mean, I'm looking at this, like in wheelchair van, the last nine years, we purchased one. And we're purchasing one more now, after nine years, we're finally purchasing another. Is there a need, are they convertible to?
Well, they hold 21 students. Well, 21, 21.
You're talking about suburban?
The wheelchair vehicle. A wheelchair vehicle is set up for 2 and 21.
2 and 21, so.
You can put students on, a smaller group than a 29/30.
But a coach can't drive it. Is that where you're going at?
Coach can't drive it. Coach can drive suburban.
Tennessee has a license.
A school bus license?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
That there are big vans to see the small bus.
I mean, I would have no issue if, I mean, you were debating over whether we needed another wheelchair vehicle or another suburban to add one more, either one or to the list.
I think the discussions we had, based on, I mean, it's kind of a roll the dice type thing, but the discussions we had on the wheelchair was the fact that we've only employed one for the last number of years. That it would be, I guess, I don't want to call it a luxury to have a third one, but I don't think it's, at this point, we could pick that up if we needed it. Alright, because the 160 has about 170,000 miles on it right now, or something like that. So that replacement will come up within the next couple of years too, so.
And you don't really need another suburban?
Not at this time. We can also order a suburban fairly quickly. If we needed one, we could get one within a matter of weeks, I would say, if the need rose.
Well, then it would go through the cap.
Right, you don't put it into the proposition.
Well, it would need to be in the proposition. I mean, this is the time, if there's the, if we need another suburban, we can add it to, what I recommended here already. I didn't hear that when we spoke, so I don't know if you feel like that's a need.
And so if you want, we can, we'll have the discussion amongst with Doug and Pete. And knowing that we have the support of the, at least the board president.
No, I'm stating for myself, I don't have any other coordinators feel about it. We're really debating over adding one more suburban for $45,000. Why not, we're getting, what's our degree showing?
I have 65%. But so the egg ratio we paid ever for five years, we just, I guess I'll just say this, maybe this is me. We felt like we've asked for a lot in recent years, and we needed a lot. But so we took a conservative approach as we looked at the list and.
What's the?
And again, as soon as we get to the every, you know, four or five every year, that will be kind of on a regular replacement cycle. Okay.
Well, I think you, Doug, you're diligent, because you went from $937,000 to $750,000, now you have $588,000.
Any other questions?
Huh?
Yeah, it's a good thing.
There's really a need for the suburban to be like that, I don't see that in a summer. Thank you, Louise. Doug and Pete. Doug and Pete. Okay, Sarah, where were you at?
Presentation.
You did that. Good. You're up.
Okay, um, I don't have a lot, but, uh, I did want to share that I visited the elementary school PTA meeting last night, Tuesday, um, to talk with the PTA members about New York State assessments and students participating in those assessments, actually sitting and taking them, and, um, it was, I was there about a half an hour. Uh, I shared with them, um, a modification of a PowerPoint that's available on State Ed. It's not completely up to date, it's actually for 2017, so I added some of the things that are new for 2018. Uh, part of that presentation was explaining that, um, in 2018, a test that would be in April and May, it's only two days of testing for the ELA and the math, um, assessments, rather than three days of testing. Um, in prior years, they've reduced the number of questions on the test, so three days. Um, the tests do not weigh into teacher evaluations at all, and we also discussed, um, that students have as long to take the test as they need, up to, within reason, up to about a day, so it's not timed at all. Um, so we discussed that a little bit, it was, uh, very well received. In fact, I had a phone call from the, uh, PTA president this morning, asking if I would be interested in doing a, a bigger Q and A session with elementary as well as middle school parents, and I actually just spoke to her tonight, we have a tentative date in, in mind, um, March, whatever the first Monday in March was, I don't remember the date, she said, um, is the, the next date of the next P, uh, middle school and elementary school PTA, so it would be a night that some parents would be ready for anyway. Um, I think we'll have it up here, where there's a little more seating, and, um, the, the president of the PTA has put something out on this page, what's it called, Highland Moms page? I think kind of just to garner interest and to see, and she got many positive responses on there, so I, I think we're going to move forward with that, so that we can, again, use discussing parents. Certainly, as always, it's a parent's decision, um, but I did emphasize that we use that information to guide us in how we, um, assess and draft teachers' views, um, that it's not something that's punitive in any way, it's not, so, it's, it's only one piece of information that we use to make educational decisions, specifically for our child. So again, it was very well received when I was there last night, and the feedback that I've received since has been quite positive, so I'm looking forward to being able to talk with the board parents. So, that's, that's that. Not My Child, I'm sure Tom will talk more about that, but it was a very good keeping. Um, what I would like to talk a little bit more about is that we did, in each building that day, we focused on healthy choices and on education. So the elementary school, on each grade level, did a different lesson plan. I got pictures from the first grade of them, um, talking about making healthy food choices, and also talking about movement, they were dancing, I, I put that on the Twitter feed. Uh, at the middle school, at the beginning of each period, they had an announcement with different facts about opium, heroin addiction, um, and then the, the teachers had discussions with students afterwards. Again, good feedback from that, and then they also, at the end of the day, sent home a fact sheet with the students, so that the parents had the idea that these were topics of conversation, and hopefully, uh, had more conversation about it when they got home at night. And then the high school students watched a series of videos, again, each content area showed the same video in the, in the core, core areas, and the same kind of thing, a little bit of, uh, discussion afterwards. Um, so we really tried to blend that, that idea of, of healthy choices and education into the day, during the day of school, um, and then the, um, the presentation that evening. And I have been, Vivian Lanzarote was the producer, I guess I would say, of the Not My Child video, we've been texting back and forth, and she was, she's gotten very positive feedback from a lot of parents. At the end of the event, she had each person who was there just write a one-word, um, impression of the evening on a little piece of paper, and she texted me today, she's trying to compile those, and the top three words that she received were sad, quote-unquote, and educated. So I think that's a, that's a, it's a good indication, um, of, of how the evening might end, and I've had Tom talk more specifically about the evening, but, uh, we were very happy that we can work in some of that education piece during the school day as well. Uh, and then the last thing is I went today to see Kristen Candia, who presented last meeting about her, her, uh, second step program. I saw her do that program, um, in kindergarten class this morning, and it was, it was great, you could tell that, she comes in once a week, um, you could tell that she, the kids knew the vocabulary, they were talking about, um, belly breathing, and naming your feelings, and calming down, being like a, a, a wet noodle to relax, and, and things like that. So it was, it was quite adorable, but you could tell that the students really were, um, remembering what she had been talking about, so it was, it was a great afternoon. That's all I have.
Sarah, I wanna thank you for your, um, positive proactive approach, um, in regard to this testing coming up this spring. Um, as you said, we, we use it as a guide, it's not all encompassing, but, but it is just so important, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you, I hope, I'm hoping that the tide is turning, I'm hoping that it's ever, um, and I, I think the state has been very responsive to the concerns of parents, and we're hoping to see themselves.
State also, um, uh, uh, to work on?
Yes. I did actually share that as well with the parents today.
We did, we did, that's the, all your major step up, what's the age gap?
Yes, it's part of our, it will be part of our accountability measure through Every Student Succeeds Act, so if we don't meet that ninety-five participation rate, we will have about four years to get ourselves to that ninety-five percent rate, and each year, there's a different, different level of oversight. So the first year, it's a building decision, the second year is a district, or plan, I guess I would say. Third year, um, your local OSCE is involved, and then the fourth year, potentially the state could come in with a plan to encourage, um, super participation. So yes, there's a little bit more weight behind it, we're not exactly sure what that means for us, for the federal government, but yes, there will be more of a team, I did share that with parents this morning.
Sarah, does that, does that participation a little bit affect?
It does not directly affect, no.
Okay.
Not currently. No, they, they kind of kept going back and forth, but they never actually kicked it.
There's nothing in there, which doesn't mean...
But we're not sure.
I love if the threat may resist it.
There was some threat, and again, we're not sure with the new Every Student Succeeds Act, and with this new level of accountability, potentially could be, and it's something that's, um, a little bit easier to, or it's a, it's a goal that's maybe a little easier to reach than perhaps some of the other, so hopefully we can get, move back in the right direction, because we never had a probability of ninety-five percent, um, before.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Yes, so Dean mentioned, and Sarah mentioned, Not My Child event Thursday. I do wanna thank the board members who were to come, and certainly thank all the community members who were there, we really had great support. Uh, the evening began with Chief Wage, uh, talking about, uh, just the, kind of, what to look for, what the drug itself actually looks like, some of the signs and symptoms. Uh, followed by Vivian, Vivian Lanzarote, as Sarah said, the producer of the film, uh, very powerful, uh, we've all watched the film, uh, you know, there weren't too many dry eyes in the house, it was very impactful, certainly, uh, for the students, for the parents, I know for myself it was. Um, you know, and Dean, to be rest assured, and this is not gonna be a one-and-done, this is, you know, this has been a long process. Uh, we started with the education of the faculty and staff back in, you know, in December, and we continue with this program, so, you know, we kind of, we formed that Highland Community Coalition, so that's made up of the school district, the, uh, Highland Rotary Club, and the Town of Lloyd Police. So we'll be continuing to work together on programs like this. My goal would be to do this presentation again on a date for spring athletes, uh, so that the winter athletes, anyone who saw it, wouldn't be required to go again, but for those new spring athletes, uh, would have to attend with a parent. Uh, we'll be following up also with, um, Super Craig Better, who's the one who trained the faculty and staff, he's coming to do some more support staff, I know, uh, in March, but, uh, in February, on February fourteenth, he will be at the middle school, presenting to students, and the fifteenth will be here at the high school, uh, presenting to students. And that's gonna be a little bit, uh, a little bit more on social media and safe networking, which is also another, you know, huge issue with our youth today. Uh, you know, we're all networking, but we have to do it properly and safely. On a completely different note, I heard a rumor that there is a possibility of some inclement weather tomorrow, uh, so please, everyone, stay tuned, okay? Just because I was appointed doesn't mean you're gonna get this tonight. Yes, uh, but as always, our goal, my goal, is to, uh, take all that available information that we have, I get, uh, tremendous help, all the time, uh, Mr. Miller, for all this help on when we call these snow days, he provides a lot of the information, so that we can make the best possible decision for faculty, staff, and our students. And finally, I do, I am not on Facebook, but I do wanna, uh, give a shout-out to the Highland Moms Group on Facebook, uh, thank you for your, uh, positive and clever messages. So thank you.
Any questions for, for superintendent? Okay, under Board of Education, new business, certification of lead evaluator of classroom teachers, section thirty-twelve-dash-D. Be resolved, the Board of Education, under recommendation of Superintendent, assuming to provisions of Educational Law thirty-twelve-dash-D in Part Thirty, three-point-one-oh of Regent Schools, hereby certifies that the following individual has, has completed all of the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluator of classroom teachers. Ryan Judge, High School Assistant, Bridge of the Voice. Camera motion, please. Motion made by, uh, seconded by Mike. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Carrie, clean up an aisle of one. The collective negotiation agreement between H, uh, Highland Central School District and HAA has been tabled, so there will be nothing, uh, no resolution there. And does anyone have any old business?
I just wanna, uh, vote to take one there.
Hmm? Okay. Table it. I'll check. Uh, I was just gonna ask about the, uh, the kiln in the middle school, has there been any progress on that?
What?
Kiln? Kiln? Sorry.
I'm like, what?
In art class, they use a kiln to cure the pottery. K-I-L-N.
It's back in the wiz.
Wait, I did my packet for a moment. The kiln.
I, our group, we had a discussion, um, a month or two ago, but that was not hooked up, I understand that there's a new location selected, uh, and it's...
But I haven't had any recent conversations, Mr. Miller, did you have any update on the kiln, where we are with the kiln?
We are going to relocate it in the back room and remove it from the classroom, as we were instructed to by OSCE's risk management.
And will that be done through present resources, or do we need to allocate resources?
That'll be done through present resources, and I have a discussion next Thursday with the architect, because we have a ventilation issue that was created by the project that needs to be corrected to be able to put the kiln where we wanna put it.
Incorporate that, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Anything for the goodwill of the district? I'll open the meeting up to public comment.
Just really quickly, on, on behalf of the Highland Administration Association, Mr. Banjul, congratulations, welcome, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Letson.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any others, public comment?
Sarah.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Tom, seconded by Mike. I'm gonna use dead. Sorry, sorry, Mike.
No, no, it's all right.
Tom and Doug.
As long as you got them both.
All, all those in favor? And before you, before the board members leave...